Michelle thought I was standing up for her.
It's okay, I can stand up for Michelle.
Oh, I'm gonna use this.
We're checking to make sure Granicus is working.
Oh, okay.
Is it working, Alex? Testing, testing. It's still connecting? It's working now? Good.
Oh, really? Okay. Good. Good night.
I'm here. Well, thank you. Barely. Barely made it up.
Oh, I know. That's fine. Make the motion to approve.
Yeah, it's like one minute. I'm ready for a nap. This is crazy. This is all your fault. If all y'all hadn't been gone last week, we wouldn't, we could've had a meeting last week and not have one today. I should've just done it without you like I threatened to do.
Let's blame it on Michelle.
Michelle was here.
Let's blame it on her, though.
No, we were both here last week. We were here. Ready?
Counsel. Where's the counsel?
I don't know. Still at the farm show. Does she think it's at 1:30?
Same property owner. Thomas Sullivan, do you know him? Yeah, we're gonna talk to you two. Here for the pledge.
Started, she just walked in, so. I know. Jeff, will we be running the timer? They gonna talk that long?
Hold over your office, too, you might want to.
He knows me. Blazing off to throw something at me. Chair was just walking away.
I'm used to saying "good morning," but I guess today it's "good afternoon." Welcome to the February 12, 2008, meeting of the Tulare County Board of Supervisors. Please join the board and I as we salute the flag and then remain standing for a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation and my God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'm kinda feeling like casual Tuesday as I glance down at my fellow board members in their farm show gear. Of course, you all can't see that, you see the jackets and the suits and the ties. There's some Levis hiding behind the diner. And that's why our board meeting was delayed today, so we appreciate your patience. Looks like, gentlemen, we'll be moving to consent calendar first. There is one item that will be off agenda, that's item 19. Any other items that members wish to pull or discuss? If not, the chair would entertain a motion.
Move approval, items three through 24 absent item 19.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second, please cast your votes. Okay. Consent calendar passes unanimously. Thank you. We'll move to our... We let everybody go back to work now? We will move to our untimed items. Item 25 is a request from the Resource Management Agency. Morning, Teresa.
Okay.
Wait, see, I did it. "Good afternoon."
Good afternoon. Madam Chairman, Supervisors. I'm Teresa Simonis, Chief Planner, Long Range Planning. Case before you today is PZI 07-008. This is a first step, zone change screening. The applicant being Richard Milligan of Visalia Moose Lodge requesting approval to file a zone change application from AE40, which is exclusive agriculture, 40-acre minimum, to C2, general commercial, to allow for the construction of a fraternal lodge with liquor and food services and club events throughout the week. Staff request that your board deny the Visalia Moose Lodge initiation to prevent the conversion of an agricultural parcel outside of an urban development boundary with no urban services to non-agricultural uses. The 5.01-acre parcel is located southeast of the city of Visalia, just south of Avenue 272 and on Road 140. The parcel is not under Williamson Act, nor is it in agricultural production. It is located outside of the city of Visalia urban development boundary and sphere of influence, which are co-terminus and which are shown in blue, but it is within the city of Visalia's urban area boundary, which is shown in red and is one mile distant from Visalia's city limits. Applicable planning documents, including the county's 1995 Visalia Urban Boundaries Plan, the county's 1996 Visalia Land Use Plan, and the city of Visalia's General Plan designate the site as agriculture. With the exception of two parcels, these parcels here, zoning on all of the surrounding parcels is exclusive agriculture with either 20-acre zoning, which is in the light green, or 40-acre zoning, which is in the dark green. Re-zonings for both parcels were approved, these two parcels, to acknowledge light manufacturing uses that existed before the Rural Valley Lands Plan was established and before the area was brought into the city's urban area boundary. County policy in both the 1988 Urban Boundaries Amendment and Draft 2030 General Plan indicate that the proposed location for the Moose Lodge outside of the Visalia UDB is inappropriate as the location does not meet the criteria for urban development. Policies require that the city be given an opportunity to annex the property to provide urban services, but the city in October 2007 correspondence indicated that it is not ready to expand into this area and favor an alternative location for the facility within the city. Other policies within the Draft General Plan 2030 that are included in the staff report prioritize the maintenance of agriculture as a primary land use in the county and direct urban development away from agricultural lands to cities where services are available. So, though staff request that your board deny the application, an alternative has been provided as food for thought, and that is to request that the applicant file a general plan initiation to modify the blue line, the county's adopted Visalia urban development boundary, to incorporate several parcels, including the project site, and to change the land use designation on the subject parcel. And this alternative does come with its own set of issues that would need to be analyzed. And that concludes staff's report, and I'm certainly willing to entertain any questions.
Questions for board members?
Do you have a couple of questions?
Supervisor Cox?
The 5.01 acres, AE40, is this a piece of a larger parcel, or is the 5.01 acres the entire lot size?
It's its own parcel, as I understand it.
And what is currently on it?
There, the land currently is vacant, and there are no structures.
Because the aerial view we have, it looks like the site next to it to the north, is that a home site?
I'll have to ask staff if they've been to the site.
Barbara Hernandez, Long Range Planning, RMA. The parcel directly to the north, there is a structure there, a home, or I can't really tell what kind of building it was. It was a home, or it looked like a home.
Look, the aerial shot, it's pretty big.
It's about the size of a home, a standard dwelling. But there's no indication...
And then the one right to the north of that, because I see there's two lots in between this and the already commercial property, it looks like there's more than just a home on that.
That, excuse me, that larger area, the second parcel to the north, is a recycling center.
A what?
A recycling center.
Recycling center. And which one are you pointing to?
I have...
It's this one right here. Steve.
Here's the recycling...
That's the home site, that's the recycling center. So, the recycling center is not properly zoned now as it's AE20, and it's got a five-acre parcel with a recycling center located on... I'm looking at the photograph that we have, and it's number one, and that would refer to the lot that's immediately north of this parcel, and it looks like there's a, is that a commercial sign on the road there? I mean, there's...
Not the one in the foreground.
There's one in the foreground, but then behind it, there's another sign that looks like it's some kind of, almost like a commercial sign.
This area is part of the recycling center.
Oh.
That means it is commercial.
Okay.
Is that your only question, sir?
That's it.
Supervisor Worthley, did you? Any other questions down the end? No?
Have I seen anybody here who wanted to speak to it?
Well, I'm sure, I'm just checking with you guys first. I have a quick question about, you know, I understand staff is recommending to deny, but is there no mitigation that could happen?
It's a pretty clear-cut case of agricultural land surrounded by other agricultural properties and premature conversion.
And it was scored by, scored by the zoning administrator, or did you score as T?
What was that?
Preliminary score?
Sorry.
If it proceeds to the zone change, then the proper scoring will take place. This is just the initiation portion.
Okay, thank you. Okay. I'm sure there's probably someone that would like to speak to us about this. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the board?
Madam Chairman, members of the board, my name is James D. Self. I'm a professional land surveyor, and I'm representing the clients on this. I think you heard me. Anyway, I appreciate the opportunity to come before you, and I haven't been before the board in quite a long time, and I recognize some faces here. And speaking with this, they pointed out the commercial development going on on the top two parcels of this parcel map, and then another very large residence, which appears to be the central offices for a farming operation. I feel that this situation has been this way too long. This map was approved a long time ago, and this land has lain fallow all this time. And I would appreciate any consideration the board could give on this, and let's put this land to work, get some taxes being paid other than agricultural taxes, and see this area grow. I will try to answer any questions that you might have pertaining to this, and I thank you for being able to speak before you.
Madam Chair, I don't have a question, I do need to disclose that Mr. Self and I have had business dealings many years ago, and I'd like to declare there is no conflict here for me to vote on this issue. I have used him as a land surveyor on small projects, and I think I did some, I used some air conditioning for you one time, Jim?
Yes.
Been a long time ago, but there is no conflict.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor. Any other questions for Mr. Self? Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the board on this subject?
Morning, members of the board, I am Dale Bruder, I am here on behalf of the Moose Lodge Organization. Also echoing simply Mr. Self's comments, the use in this area is consistent with the request, there are already commercial uses in the area, they are asking for permit so that they may eventually be able to put lodge facilities out there with family use options available to them on five acres, that's what their purpose was in seeking the zoning change to begin with. And if you were to look in the area, as you can see from the photographs, and as Mr. Self has said, this has not been land that has been used for farming for quite some time. It's not land that really, most likely, someone is gonna want to put a new residence on, giving the use, it's coming this way, already of a commercial nature, and we would request it to be granted simply because it would be the best use of the property. I, too, would answer any questions if there are any.
Board members? Thank you, Mr. Bruder. Anyone else? Then I guess it requires a discussion with this board.
Madam Chair, to be consistent, I voted against the project on Lovers Lane in Caldwell, which was a church, because I thought it was leapfrogging development, and I also view this project as the same. I think it's outside the boundaries of Visalia at this present time, so to be consistent, I'm in favor of allowing the project to go forward.
I think it's one of the dilemmas, I mean, it's in between the UAB and the UDB, and one of those items that comes across our desk on occasion, we have to make a decision on. Supervisor Cox?
Madam Chair, as I look at the other properties around, north of that and across the street, there are other commercial uses in the adjacent area there that are being used as much higher commercial uses what this site is proposed for, so that's why one of the first questions was how big is a parcel? It's five acres. If you had 20 of them right next to each other, it might be viable farming land, but I don't see that five acres as viable farming land anymore, so I would be in support of the project. I think it is a good, it's a better use for the property than it is in its current condition. And given the fact that also that Visalia probably will not go out that far for quite some time, given the current attitude of the council in regards to development expansion, I don't think Visalia will be out here for decades, so I would support the applicant's request.
I, you know, in speaking with the folks, my gosh, I think it was two years ago, has it been that long, two years ago when all of this started? I know it's been mentioned by others that they, you know, that there's other places they could be, but the reality of it is, this is the property that they have, and they did, to my knowledge, they tried to find an appropriate pace and were within the city limits and were kind of stymied at every effort, you know, with folks not wanting them to be next to their property to locate their lodge or whatever, and you know, this happens to us frequently, so. Although I haven't talked to any of them in the two years since the search started.
Yeah, I'm not aware of any of those conversations or...
Well, that was two years ago, so. Supervisor Worthley, you looked like you were...
Well, Madam Chair, thank you. This is, of course, not a project in front of us, it's a zone change, and what would follow after this, if this zone change were permitted, would be a project, the project would be subjected to further review, subsequent requirements and so forth. In my mind, this is a closer call than dealing with a project that Mr. Shida referred to earlier, that one was closer to the city limits, this one's a little further out. It's one of those situations where you have this series of five-acre parcels sort of stacked on top of each other, surrounded by larger parcels that are all actively engaged in agriculture, it's the bottom one, but I think in light of all I've heard and seen, I would be inclined to support this, and it's primarily because of the use that's being made in the properties adjacent to it, immediately north of it, and the fact that no one is here further objecting to it. In other words, if the property owner in front of it, immediately north of it, was a homeowner, and they were violently objecting to it, I could certainly understand their concerns and would be probably persuaded to join them in that, because if I have a residence and all of a sudden I have a commercial piece of property south of me in land that's been zoned for agriculture, that would not be my expectation, and it would cause me some concerns. We don't have that objection, and a point was made, they think this is a farm management building, which is another commercial use, it's not a residence, and then certainly the uses to the north of it are commercial in nature, and as was said, that would tend to lessen the expectation that someone might buy this property for a home site because of the commercial uses being made to the north of it. So, I, again, in my mind, this is a close call, much closer than what we've dealt with in the past, but I think in light of what was presented here today, I would be inclined to support the change of zone.
Anybody else want to weigh in?
Madam Chair, that being said, I would motion to approve applicant's request for a change of zone.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second, cast your votes, please. George. Now's not the right time. We voted.
I would request the motion be amended to apply the alternative, which included the general plan amendment. If you apply for the change of zone, it has to be denied because it's inconsistent with the general plan. So, it needs the general plan amendment, too.
Okay. Would you like to amend your motion? That we already voted on?
You can make a separate motion if you wish to, sir.
Do I have to?
No.
Am I obligated by, you know, when I'm, you know, I haven't looked at that, so I don't know that I agree, because he's just asking for a change of zone, do you have to, anytime you change the zone, you also have to amend the general plan?
Not be requiring them, you would be authorizing them to file a general plan amendment, so that if it's determined that a general plan amendment is required, they don't have to come back.
That's, okay, I will amend it then.
Second, Grees.
Do we need to vote on the amended? Yes. Okay, we're voting again. Okay, and we're four to one, motion passes on the first count and also on the amendment. Okay, that was fun. Moving right along, we're gonna move to item 26. All right, you're still here?
Thank you very much.
Okay, Teresa Simonis again. This is another zoning initiation, EZI 04-002, the applicant being Marge Ballsley of RL Schaefer &amp; Associates on behalf of property owners Chan and Victoria Tran requesting approval to file a zone change application from AE10, exclusive agriculture, 10-acre minimum, to C3, service commercial, or C2, retail commercial, and C3, to develop the entire property into a shopping center with retail stores and a full-service gas station. Again, staff request that your board deny the initiation to prevent the conversion of an agricultural parcel in the Rural Valley Lands Plan area with no urban services to non-agricultural uses. Looking at the regional view, the 8.4-acre parcel is located on the southwest corner of State Route 190, an eligible state scenic highway, and Road 284 east of the city of Porterville. The property is located outside of the city of Porterville's urban area boundary, which is shown in red, and is designated as agriculture within the Rural Valley Lands Plan area, with the southeast corner abutting the Foothill Growth Management Plan area, where the land is designated Valley Agricultural Extension in the light orange. The Williamson Act contract, which unfortunately shown wrongly as existing on the map in the staff report, completed non-renewal January 1, 2007, though a recent site visit... staff report, completed non-renewal January 1, 2007, though a recent site visit shows the northern portion of the parcel is vacant and the southern portion of the parcel does have a citrus grove and a residence on it. Almost five acres of the site is shown on the county zoning map as being in the OM43 zone. This is recreational mobile home overlay, 43,000 square foot minimum parcel size, and this zone allows for uses such as hotels, recreation-related sales and service stations that are enclosed on three sides. This zoning district was established in 1974, a year before the Rural Valley Lands Plan was adopted along both sides of Highway 190 to implement the 1964 general plan, which designated the area by Success Lake as recreation-oriented development. After the RVLP was adopted in 1975, an East Valley zoning study was to be prepared to clean up the discrepancies between the general plan agricultural designation and the zoning, but this study was not completed. None of the non-agricultural zones within the Rural Valley Lands Plan are grandfathered by Rural Valley Lands Plan policy, where they do not meet the RVLP point criteria for a zone change. Therefore, the Rural Valley Lands Plan is the controlling factor when making a land use determination. The general plan update 2030 continues the Rural Valley Lands Plan unaltered, and an RVLP VP point score of this, the project parcel assigns 19 points, making it ineligible for conversion to non-agricultural uses. And again, policies within the existing and draft general plans support the continuation of agriculture as the primary land use within the valley region, and thus, staff recommend that your board deny this application. Having said that, alternatives have been provided that would acknowledge existing OM43 zoning, this portion here, or extend it westward to the property line and retain the recreation orientation for the site. Authorizing this approach would also require a general plan initiation application to amend the text of the Rural Valley Lands Plan that would address how non-agricultural zoning, such as this OM43, prior to the RVLP will be treated. And that concludes staff's report.
Questions for staff? Anybody?
I guess I have a question. Teresa, under the Rural Valley Lands Plan, this is an unusual circumstance where we see a piece of one parcel which is essentially subjected to the Rural Valley Lands Plan and a portion of it is not. Is that, is that correct? Or potentially that would be the case?
No, the whole, the whole site is subject to the Rural Valley Lands Plan. That's shown in blue here. And this is the boundary between RVLP and FGMP, but even in the FGMP, it's abutting the Valley Agricultural Extension, which also the RVLP applies to.
But the zoning that now allows for hotels and service stations and that sort of thing is, are we saying that that's invalidated by the Rural Valley Lands Plan?
Right. The general plan is a higher tier than the zoning ordinance, so the general plan would supersede the zoning in this case, in all cases. So, it over, it invalidates this.
Questions for staff?
I apologize. Let me have you say that again. So, the blue stripe, the OM43, you're saying, in that little corner of it there is not a legal zoning or it is, it is covered up by, I'm trying to...
An agricultural land use...
Help me understand. So, that doesn't really exist then, in that corner?
Right. The agricultural land use designation of the general plan of the Rural Valley Lands Plan supersedes the OM43 zoning. When the RVLP was adopted, a study that would have gone through and had looked for discrepancies such as this and eliminated those discrepancies was to be done as part of the program.
And it wasn't done?
And it was not done.
Well, if...
But...
Is that just a dollars and cents thing? It wasn't done because you didn't want to do it?
I was very small then.
Thirty, thirty-two years ago.
But basically, to follow up on that, it basically has invalidated all of that property to what's basically shown on that map, all that blue. If I'm looking at that map that was shown earlier about where the Rural Valley Lands Plan applies, it applies to this parcel and then everything going east for a distance that probably includes all those other parcels that are on there that had the blue...
Right, to this area. And then this, some of this here would be PDFM. We didn't unfortunately do the whole of the development corridors, but this is a development corridor that does move north and it eventually encompasses 190. So, those types of uses would be, in some cases, appropriate in PDFM.
Well, I, my, then my next issue would be, you know, someone purchasing this property, they would go and look and see what the zoning was, and they would buy the property for that use, because in your staff report on page two, you says OM43 zone does allow a number of recreational commercial uses such as hotels and service stations, which it sounds along the lines of what they're wanting to do. So, you know, I'm, and I can't read their mind, but, you know, someone could have bought that land for that purpose, but you're saying that since 20-plus or 30-plus years ago, the county didn't do the follow-up piece by eliminating all that, could they have been misled?
It's still on the books.
Because if I bought a piece of property that, on the books, it was zoned for commercial, and I came in and you said, oh, well, you know, that was our mistake, we didn't do the cleanup work, it's not really commercial, something else supersedes that, I'd be a little...
And the due diligence, though, would definitely need to include a general plan land use investigation, which would show that discrepancy.
Okay, I just, you know, I'll drop it, but that just, you know, putting myself in a property owner's position, had I bought a piece of property that was zoned for something I was wanting to do and then have someone say, oh, well, by the way, you know, it's not, even though it says it is, it's not, then I would have some issues. So, I'm done.
Can I help clarify that? Marge Ballsley, R.L. Schaefer &amp; Associates, representing the Trans, when the Rural, believe it or not, I was working as a county planner when the RVLP was approved. And I'm familiar with what went on with this and other areas. There were 16 areas that were omitted from the Rural Valley Lands Plan for rezoning to exclusive ag for further study, and those were to be taken up by staff at staff's convenience. And that ability to step in and do that extra work just has not been available to staff. Wasn't available then, hasn't been available for the past 30 years, probably will not be available in the near future or the far future, as far as that goes. The Trans did buy this as an existing non-conforming zone situation. They have recreational zoning on 4.8 acres, an exclusive ag zoning on approximately 13.2 or something. It's just one of those issues where the county has not been able to go back and clean up something that was to be further considered, not necessarily for downzoning, upzoning, sidezoning, just to be looked at to make sure it was still compatible with the area and with existing uses.
That history.
Teresa, could you put up the aerial, please? Okay. I've driven by this property many, many times, and to me, it looks like it's a natural at some point in time to be commercial retail of some type. My concern would be circulation, traffic flow through that intersection. But right now, it's just a vacant piece of land. But it is an ideal commercial spot at some time. Maybe we could address that in the general plan, instead of going through all these hoops?
Well, a couple of thoughts...
I think that's one of our problems.
Couple of thoughts comes to my mind here.
Which plan are we under?
One is that this is AE10, is that what I understood?
It's AE40.
Oh, AE40.
Forty acres?
AE10?
That, yeah, that's what I'm looking at, right there. Go back, go back to that one you just, that one right there. It shows AE10 immediately to the...
My apologies. I was on the last map still.
So, potentially, this parcel could be divided into two 10-acre parcels. The northern part of it could be perhaps conformed to that earlier zoning, because I think what I hear Marge saying is that the fact that we haven't done it doesn't mean that we have a statute of limitations problem. We still could be, we still could do this study that might determine that this ought to be separated out of the RLVP, in which case we would look at perhaps that northern half of that parcel and still leave the 10-acre parcel to the south in agriculture. Am I, is that an option for us to consider?
It seems feasible.
Because you do have commercial right across the street on the other corner and up the, up the road.
To take in more than this parcel here?
I was just pointing out that the use right now is there's commercial property across the street from it.
Right.
Look at the photographs we have from number three shooting diagonally across.
Is that the convenience store?
There's a market and service station.
Supervisor Dennis, did you, were you wanting to make comment or you were just...
No, I was just saying that there is a commercial...
County Council wants to make comment.
May I ask a question, Madam Chair of Staff? Could the board adopt the zone change with the site plan overlay to address Supervisor Ashida's concerns regarding circulation? So that, site plan overlay would require a site plan review, which would, rather than the project simply being permitted and built? Is that correct? I'm turning to both of you as the planning expert.
That would be appropriate for the zoning amendment to apply for, particularly given that it is a scenic highway, eligible scenic highway corridor.
It would probably be appropriate to meet the scenic corridors element to add the SC zoning to it so that there is site plan review. I've already talked with Caltrans regarding this site, and they don't want any access to their highway closer than 400 feet to the intersection, which is why we were trying to go down as far as possible for zoning. But, you know, if we have to apply for SC, that's certainly acceptable.
I just wanted to make sure your board understood that that would be an option as well. It is true that Caltrans is going to regulate, because it runs on one side, it runs along Highway 190, Caltrans is going to be in there.
Plus, it swings down to about 400 feet. They bought the roadway down to about 400-foot strip down from the highway. So, the access point would be way down on Road 284.
Mr. Russell?
I had a question. I don't know if it's for the board members or for George. I know that it was intended, this board, to allow for some corridor development where it makes sense. I don't know if we defined what a corridor is. Wouldn't that be considered, the SR 190, a corridor in our county that we would want to potentially develop where it makes sense?
The focus, the general plan update focus was on highways 99 and 65, but there is an interim policy in the general plan update for where those conversions can take place pending future plans being developed, and we could look at that policy and see if it's applicable.
That the policy cited in your agenda item, where development is allowed, it has to meet a certain criteria?
The policy that I'm thinking of is in the corridors chapter of the general plan update. It's not in here.
Well, can I ask you a question? Would this, would this project be allowed under the proposed new general plan?
It doesn't change the fact that the Rural Valley Lands Plan supersedes the zoning that's on that parcel and that the intention had been to review and clean up that zoning.
You had made a comment in your presentation, too, that the Rural Valley Lands Plan has not been changed. It will not change from its existing status to the new general plan. Is that a correct statement?
It is the same as it had been. It was carried forward as is.
I believe there were some exceptions to the, I think the general rule remained the same, but there was, we were talking about where you had non-existing, pre-existing uses that, or you had old packing houses, for instance, that had no further life as packing houses, but could be put to a different kind of use, those kinds of things. I think we, if I'm not mistaken, we were supposed to be allowing for that sort of thing to happen in the Rural Valley Lands Plan.
Yeah, but that wasn't actually a change in the Rural Valley Lands Plan. That's be a change in the zoning regulations and conformity to the Rural Valley Lands Plan. Answer to the CAO's question, the corridors concept was only applied to 65 and 99. That doesn't mean it couldn't change and expand to other areas when you get into that process, but that's the way it's written right now.
If I can ask one last question, the 400-feet rule, look, as I look at this map now, does that, that existing zoning for the recreational, does that come down, does that come down beyond the 400-feet mark?
Yes, it does, by about 100 feet.
About 100 feet? Okay, thank you.
And if I can take just a moment of your time, the Rural Valley Lands Plan point evaluation that was completed on, in this project could be wiped by 11 points immediately if we were to file a parcel map now and address the zone line and create two parcels. Getting that 4.8 acres as a separate piece eliminates 11 points.
And that was going to be my question. Is the applicant interested in that concept of dividing that property into two 10-acre parcels?
Not what they want, but they'll accept it. But I can, I can eliminate 11 points right now by just recognizing that zone line. Also, I think the point, the single point given for inharmonious land use doesn't apply when you're asking for commercial development. That applies when you're asking for residential-type development. To have a mine within a quarter mile or a half a mile of a commercial development means nothing. It's not inharmonious. It's fine, no problem. So, I think the one point that was given for that should have been stricken altogether, but I can get rid of the other 10 points just by the fact that that portion is 4.81 acres. It's less than five acres, so you don't add the next four points and the next three points and the next three points. So, that just drops it down immediately to well acceptable under the RVLP, at least for that portion.
Just the one further comment, then I'll sit down. Same comment as before, if the boards have a mind to allow this one to move forward, you've got a general plan conflict. So, there has to be a general plan amendment authorized as well, and that could take one of a number of forms, we just suggested one in the staff report.
Okay, comments, questions?
Well, I'm just kind of...
I'm always, my question is always, which, which general plan?
The process going forward. I mean, I would be inclined to support this project from the standpoint, since they have the ability to divide into a 10-acre parcel, and that would, that would seem like Jim Maples' splitting-the-baby approach to things, but it seems to be pretty consistent with the way this property was zoned initially. If it meets the needs of the applicant in there going forward, that would be my preference, I think. That way, still, you look at the other properties around it, you know, they're pretty big parcels for the most part. As you go back to the, to the west, and so creating a 10-acre parcel right across, you could have another 10-acre parcel, and you've got large parcel the other side. So, that would help to keep that in agriculture and help those other people stay in agriculture. And if it, it is, as Mr. Shida pointed out, this is a good location for commercial development, given its proximity to Reservation Road, I believe that's Reservation Road and State Highway 190, and you've got commercial property development that is basically adjacent, catty corn from it. So, that, that would be how I would approach this. Now, the question is how we get there in a form of a motion. I mean, is it, is it... I mean, is it, is it...
I believe it would be to authorize a request for general plan amendment and authorization to apply for the change of zone for these north sectional 10 acres.
Conditioned upon the, conditioned upon the application for splitting the parcel.
Or just applying for the zoning and general plan on that north 10 acres.
Council agree with that?
Well, I think for you to accomplish what I, I believe I heard you say in regard to your sort of split-the-baby Solomon-like characterization, I think you would want, because there isn't anything that would require in the zone change now, and I'm not suggesting that the Trans would not honor their commitments, but there's nothing that would require the application for the lot split, and that is what you...
I would say subject to. In other words, this, this would be, this would be the motion, subject to that application for the lot split, then it becomes part of the condition.
And those could actually be applied for, sort of...
Simultaneously?
Simultaneously.
Okay.
And that would help me not have to apply for a zone variance to divide the property. In order to have a division at that 10-acre line, I would have a portion that's 10 acres on the south and then a portion on the north that's not 10 acres, in the AE-10 zone.
We understand that happens frequently because you don't have true 20s and stuff.
Right. Right. So...
Yes, I don't think that's a...
If I do it all simultaneously, then we could go ahead and do it without a zone variance. Thank you very much. That's, that would suit me fine.
That would be my motion then at this time.
Is everybody clear on, on that motion?
I'm sorry, was there a second? There was a second?
There was a second. I believe it was Mr. Innes, or Mr. Ashida.
Ashida.
Excuse me, Mr. Ashida.
I couldn't hear him.
Who's channeling Mr. Innes?
He didn't mic yet.
Okay, cast your votes, please. Okay, motion passes unanimously. Okay, thank you all. We'll move back to our 1:30 timed item that we're almost on time for. Public hearing, item number one. Request from Resource Management Agency to approve the tentative subdivision map for Track TM 795.
Can you pull the mic down, please?
Charlotte Breswaelis, RMA Project Review. Thank you. What you have before you today is a tentative subdivision to divide 27.72 acres into 25 The site is located on the west side of Globe Drive, approximately one mile south of State Highway 190, southwest of Springville. As you can see, the site and the majority of the surrounding properties are zoned PDFM, Plan Development, Foothill, Combining Zone, Special Mobile Home Zone, except for four parcels located on the east side, which are zoned RA 43, Rural Residential, 43,000 square foot minimum. The site currently contains a recreational vehicle campground, which has been at this location since 1977. It contains 30 motor home hookups and 40 additional campsites. As you can see from the aerial photo, there are three ponds which incorporate the subject site, three large ponds. The pond located to the southeast of the site will be eliminated to accommodate the development. The other two ponds will be reduced in circumference but will be increased in depth and will remain as an amenity to this subdivision. What looks like a road going through the two major ponds is actually a dam, and it will also remain as a footpath going from one side to the other. The lot sizes for the subdivision range from approximately 18,744 square feet to 31,257 square feet with an average lot size of approximately half an acre, 22,850. The main entrance is located at this location, at the southeast, close to the southeast corner of the site, and there is a emergency fire protection entrance which will be located at the northeast portion of the site. The subdivision will be a private gated community with all common improvements to be maintained by homeowners association. That includes open landscape areas, the private streets, fencing, drainage areas, community water system, the fire hydrant system, the gated keypad entry security improvements, all to be maintained by a homeowners association. Two exceptions were requested pertaining to the requirement for curbs and gutters and the maximum length of the cul-de-sac. The exceptions were found to be appropriate for this relatively small, private gated The proposals were presented at, this proposal was presented at the Planning Commission on October 24th, November 28th, and also December 12th. At those meetings, Mr. Costa, the applicant, and his agent, Mr. Winton, both spoke in favor of the project, and there were several persons, the majority of whom were adjacent property owners, spoke in opposition to this proposal, stating their concerns regarding water quality and quantity, drainage, flooding, soils, lining of the ponds, the traffic, environmental effects, aesthetics, the lot sizes, and the increased density. All of these concerns are addressed in the attached, attached reports and were resolved to the satisfaction of the commission, who, resulting in a recommended approval for the subdivision. Water will be supplied by a community water system regulated by the county, which means that the well is monitored and tested on a regular basis by the county Environmental Health Division. The well is located just south of the subject site but located on property owned by Mr. Costa. By condition of approval, a well lot will be required for the use of that well for the subdivision, including a recorded easement for access to and maintenance of that well for this site, and will be maintained by the homeowners association. The sewage disposal will be provided by individual septic systems, which will be engineered-designed One of the concerns discussed by the Planning Commission at length was the possibility of lake water leaking into the septic system, leach fields, and vice versa. It was recommended by the consolidated testing laboratories, who did the soil and percolation tests, and by the county Environmental Health Division. By condition of approval, the ponds will be lined to avoid this from happening. Three options were submitted. Options one and two have been determined to be the most effective and methods of preventing lateral seepage, but all three options have been cleared by geotechnical engineering. This plan shows the plan view options and how they work. The plan view option for one and two is the one on the left, and the plan three is on This is Globe Drive, looking north from the southwest corner of the site. This residence is located east of Globe Drive, looking northeast. This is the curve at the lower part of the site, which curves around and runs to, goes This is Globe Drive, heading east. This is the school bus. It does turn around at that curve area. There's a very large area, as you can see, where the bus turns around, and then they pick up the students on the east side of the road, I guess at the end of the driveways there for the people who live there on the opposite side of the subject site. Again, this is Globe Drive. This is the entrance to the site. And this is another shot of the entrance. This is the road just inside the entrance. It runs parallel with Globe Drive and heads north, and it does traverse around the edge of the lake areas of the site. And these are various shots of the site at various locations, taken from different angles. I have more than I had in here. The staff did receive a letter of correspondence yesterday, which I believe you have been given a copy of. This letter was from Gerald and Diane Johnson. Mr. and Mrs. Johnson stated their concerns in regard to the environmental documents. Staff believes these concerns have been addressed in the various reports prepared for this project. A biological assessment of vegetation and wildlife was prepared by Paul Pruitt and Associates, dated June 3, 2007, for the entire site. And we can go over those findings if you would like, but there was no evidence of sensitive plant or animal species found on the site. There was no riparian, riparian or wetland habitat that exists on the site, and there were no undisturbed native habitat existing within the project boundaries. There were, however, some trees suitable for raptor nest, and so due to that fact, prior to development, a, an inspection will be made of the, of the property for the raptors, and if during the survey they find anything of that nature, the activity according to the Fish and Game and the Migratory Bird Treaty Act will be followed. And that concludes staff's report. Subject to any questions you may have.
Thank you, Charlotte. Any questions from Board members? Supervisor Innes?
I have a question. The water system to irrigate, landscaping is going to come from a separate source than the well, is that, that's my understanding?
To be honest, I'll have to defer that question to the applicant because I don't know. Sorry.
Any other questions, Board members?
Is that it? One, quick one. The first time I've heard of this recreational park area, is it something that's, that they lease out on a daily, weekly, monthly basis to people to bring their motor homes in or campsites, campers to come in? Is that, is that your understanding, the way it operates? People just make reservations or just show up and pay a rental fee and park?
They do, yes. Mm-hmm.
Open year-round?
I believe, well, I'm not sure. Sorry.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? You're leaning in, Ashida.
I'm not sure what that means, yes or no.
I think the main concern I have about this project is like I, same concern I have with other projects in this area, especially around Triple R, is the fact of impacts, We do not have impact fees in place at this point in time. And road.
Pardon?
And road impacts on Globe Drive. So, those are a couple of concerns. I don't know how we're going to address this, but we'll talk about it.
A fire hydrant system will be put into place and inspected by the county fire department in regard to traffic. A traffic impact report was not required because it's a small subdivision. Caltrans has indicated this project will not impact the highway significantly, anyway.
That's all the questions for staff, then. Is the applicant here or his representative would like to address the Board? Supervisor Ashida, did I hear you saying that you would like to see fees as a condition of approval? Should we have that mindset?
Personally, I'm not sure if we can do that. So that's something we need to discuss.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman, members of the Board. I'm Jim Winton. Business address is 150 West Morton. Also in the audience are George, Jim, Nancy, Costa, Tom Plating, and Ryan Walker, all principals of the CIRIS development, which is the main applicant for the project. You received a pretty thick packet on the project. There's a lot of detailed information in that, in that staff report. In this particular case, the applicant has done more than normal, done more than normal, probably because there are some things going on here that aren't normal, that they've spent some, some money in relation to water supply and soils work in relation to the project. I know that the Board, on previous occasions and today, as a matter of fact, have expressed concerns in a couple of areas, those being water supply and road maintenance. This, the water supply for the project, they have, as I mentioned, they did drill a well, and that well meets the requirements for quantity and the safe drinking water standards. They drilled one, they proposed two. The second well would be, based on the production of the first well is adequate for the subdivision, they still need a second well for standby purposes in the event of a problem with the one well. The project is proposed, oh, water. They propose to provide a separate system for irrigation, which will come from the pond or the lake, the lake, and probably the fire suppression water system will also come from that lake as opposed, as opposed to coming from the drinking, the drinking water source. The project is a, will have an owners' association. It's, it's proposed private roads. The interior roads will have no maintenance impact for the county. They will be maintained by the homeowners' association. Again, as I said, there's a lot of information in the, in the packet, and in the interest of time, I'm not going to go through those things. If there's any questions that you have or any additional details that you feel you need beyond what's in the packet, we'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Questions, yes?
Mr. Winton, there was a question raised. Is this, is this a year-round use currently?
Oh, yes, yes. It's presently a year-round use. They have campers, they have people stay on the weekend. It seems, I live close by, it seems like the bulk of the, of the services provided are fishermen, are day fishermen. There's a lot of people that go there and fish for the day. So probably the highest use, existing use would be fishing, but it's open all year. You make reservations, stay a week, a weekend, whatever.
Any other questions for him?
Thank you.
Okay. This is a public hearing, and I have some people that have indicated here that they would like to address the Board regarding this matter. Just because you didn't give me a form does not preclude your opportunity to speak. I will call on these people first, and then there'll be opportunity for others to speak. I'm going to ask the clerk to set the timer for three minutes. If you have sent us information already, that's already been entered into the record, we would prefer that you, you refer to that, but, but the Board has all received correspondence that we, you probably don't need to reread to us, and we would very much appreciate your respectful, and we will respect you in your three-minute time limit in addressing the Board on this matter. So, with that, I'm going to open the public hearing, and this is in no particular order, just however I got it. Rosemary...
Kempel.
Thank you. Rosemary. Either one, take your, take your choice.
I'm Rosemary Kempel. I live at 300...
I live at 33164 Globe Drive. I've written a letter so that I could stay on track and stay in the three minutes. Globe Drive is a beautiful scenic loop, winding past rural lots, mostly between 2 and 40 acres, large lots. And I know, everyone I know in our neighborhood is opposed to this dense development of Mr. Costa's property. And you can see the petition that has been submitted here in these last months. Our main concern, as across the street neighbors, is the water drainage and environmental impact. We are slightly downstream from the Costa property, and we started discovering that at certain times of the year, with no rainfall, we'd have water come up and swamp an area of our property. And we discovered it was because of when Mr. Costa would let water out of his ponds upstream that would swamp down below him and go under Globe Drive and swamp us. So, there's definitely an impact. Whatever happens up there at the ponds has an impact downstream, and I do not see that addressed. I know Charlotte had mentioned that things have been addressed. That has not. There's been no environmental study that includes the effects on downstream. So, we are concerned about that. We also hear that the Department of Fish and Game has requested an EIR and also SLAA, Stream or Lake Alterations Agreement. And yet, that is not being required as part of approval of the project. We are concerned about whatever happens there upstream affecting us and would like to see a better environmental study of those concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosemary. Okay. Next request for my have is from Diane Johnson.
My husband and I live at 33158 Globe Drive, and you all received letters from us.
Yes, we did.
And my purpose this afternoon is just to summarize and highlight some of the issues that we raised in that letter. First of all, this is potentially a good project, a good project for our neighborhood. In future years, we may need housing such as this. And the proposal is an improvement over the current use of the property as a campground. But the state of California has enacted laws to ensure that all projects fulfill their potential. One of these, the California Environmental Quality Act, or CEQA, requires that projects identify and analyze all adverse changes in any of the physical conditions within the area affected by the project, including off-site as well as on-site at all phases of the project. The purpose of this project is to negate or minimize the adverse effects on the site itself and in the surrounding area, and thereby to maximize the potential for the project's success. CEQA requires that an initial environmental study include identification and analysis of the effects of the whole project. The whole project in this case involves spilling all or major portions of either three or five ponds, depending on which picture you look at, and transforming the property from 80% water to approximately 30%. The environmental study not only did not include an analysis of this major aspect of the project, but the documents asserted that this change would not occur. CEQA also requires that a complete environmental impacts checklist analyze the off-site as well as on-site effects of proposed projects. With minor exceptions, the project's off-site effects are not even identified. There is, therefore, no support for the county's negative declaration of environmental impacts. The information provided, so far as it goes, points to a level of actual and potential effects, especially on the quantity and quality of our water, that require a full environmental impact report. As proposed, this high-density project with its attendant 25 leach lines has many potential adverse effects within and beyond the site boundaries. The impracticality of a sewage treatment facility or an adjustment in the number and size of the lots is neither legally or environmentally acceptable rationale. In conclusion, it is the consensus of those in the immediate neighborhood that to move forward without a full environmental impact report would be imprudent and injudicious, not only for the community, but for what has the potential to become a good project.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Next, I have Mary Ann Oliphant, if I'm pronouncing that correctly.
Good afternoon. I'm Mary Ann Oliphant, and I live just to the east of Costa Twin Lakes at 33216 Globe Drive. And what I'd like to do today is just read a letter from Margaret Phillips to you.
As long as it didn't take longer than three minutes.
It's one page. Dear Board of Directors and Ms. Connie Conway, the approved preliminary site plan review number PRE-06029 with conditions and recommendations as presented by the staff's report is vague in regards to water resource protection. After reading the negative declarations stated above, Project TM 795 PSR, there were many contradicting comments and recommendations by numerous governmental agencies and private specialists. Most important, under the negative declaration facts, page 10, Environmental Settings, Item 1, Topographical Features. Ponds covered approximately 80% of the subject site. The surrounding water resource levels are in danger. Moderately low permeability soil is poorly suited to develop. These soils range from low to high with severe septic tank limitations. However, the laboratory statement in the NG facts, page 11, item 3, under soils, a contradiction as to the site study reported by Consolidated Testing Laboratories Incorporated dated May 30th, final statements indicated, based on field and laboratory test data, the engineering analysis, the site is suitable for the proposed construction. Further, the last statement, it was recommended that the lakes areas be lined. The last statement could be complementing as, contemplating as a county of Tulare, state of California, future warning. The lake areas should be lined for protection to what? Should the surrounding area landowners supply resource water wells to be lined for their protection against further pollution? Therefore, Project TM 795 PSR development is threatening environmental development for the surrounding unique wildlife and aquatic areas, the disruption and future contamination to water resources. Do not forget the state of California Water Resource Control Board Water Code requirements. It is my sincere hope that the governing Board of Supervisors, County of Tulare, State of California, consider a thoughtful approach to the future Springville area foothill water resource problems. Respectfully, Margaret Phillips.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's actually Dr. Andrea Espinoza.
Thank you, doctor, for the correction.
I'm a physician, a practicing physician in Porterville. And basically, I'm just going, a lot of people will bring up some issues, but my biggest concern is, again, the water quantity and quality and its potential cumulative effect on residents of Springville. As many have already have addressed, Montgomery Ranch and River Island are large developments, already having water shortages, rationing, and high levels of nitrates. So, as I said, many of my patients who have children have expressed a lot of concern about their children's are being exposed to excessive nitrates, which, as you all know, can lead to long-term medical problems, including cancer. In spite of these warnings, no environmental impact was requested to evaluate the cumulative effect on water quantity and quality. Though the commission initially unanimously denied approval on November 28, directing the staff to prepare a resolution stating the negative declaration was not adequate for development. This was Resolution 8277. However, in an office memorandum, so I know you have this in your pocket, but I'm going to pass it back to you as well with my letter, that if you look at it, information that the planning, Ms. Banzuela's had addressed, the staff says the lakes are not part of the proposal. And yet, it is part of the proposal. I mean, if it's not part of the proposal, and we shouldn't be addressing, we need to because it is part of it. It's the, the lakes are the gem of Costa Estates. So, I address, I hope that you read November 28 inter-office memo. Commissioner Elliott suggested its concern for sewage package system to be addressed. He, in particular, having one individual sewage, whatever you call that, sewage whatever. I'm only a physician. I don't know the details on this stuff. But it came back, Ms. Banzuela, or the commission staff came back with, nope, can't do it. That was the end of it. No more further information. Now, and we're hearing talk that the 5th district, under the leadership of Supervisor Ennis, has bought water rights to provide Montgomery Ranch with water by putting in two wells. This is from the Costa Lake area where the development will be or adjacent to that area. But again, Mr. Ennis can perhaps elaborate further on this. Again, what is this going to have a cumulative effect on this, on Springville? And my request is an environment impact report be done for the safety of our children, livestock, and homes. Thank you. And I will give this to you so that we...
The clerk right here. Dr. Espinoza, we need just an address for you on record.
Oh, 33222 Globe Drive.
Thank you very much.
Across the street.
Thank you.
Supervisors, am I talking loud enough? Okay. I have been attending the Tulare County Water Commission meetings since the Water Commission was restarted in July 2007. Many times, the need for new water retention basins has been brought up by Supervisor Ashida and Dennis Keller. Tulare County desperately needs more groundwater recharge basins. We can't afford to lose any. We are in a state of critical groundwater overdrafting. This project's proposal to fill in major portions of three ponds reduces the recharge area. Why would the Resource Management Agency recommend approval of a project which would reduce our groundwater recharge capability? Another important topic at the Water Commission is contamination of groundwater. The Department of Fish and Game, which recommended an EIR on this, be prepared for this project, described potential impacts of this project as increased sediment input to the pond from structure and road runoff and toxic runoff from household chemicals and septic systems. That's pretty nasty contamination which will seep into groundwater. I understand the water from this lake empties eventually into the Tulee River. Recent California Environmental Quality Act judicial decisions by the California Supreme Court have found any development anywhere in California must demonstrate a sufficient long-term water supply of clean water. It must also prove that its development does not degrade the groundwater and any adjacent surface water. It is easily foreseeable that this development of 25 large homes will need another well drilled in the future. Mr. Costa stated at the planning commission hearing that some of the houses would be 3,000 to 4,000 square feet. Since Tulare County's general plan has no mandatory water conservation and water efficiency policies, these homeowners will run out of water. According to Nancy Bruce, board member of the Springville Public Utilities District, on January 22, 2008, half of all private wells in Springville are contaminated with unacceptable levels of radon or nitrates. So, anytime you drill a well, you may have contaminated water 50% of the time, not to mention that water only runs in rock fractures in the foothills. Dennis Keller, in the Keller Wegley Water Resources Report for Tulare County of 2007, suggests all levels of development pass the proof of availability of water test. He notes widespread groundwater overdrafting. How can the Resource Management Agency give this project a negative declaration on environmental impact? Certainly not on the facts. I recommend this project be denied and the parcel considered as a county park. I'm sure the Sequoia Riverlands Trust and the Nature Conservancy would be glad to purchase the land.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the board on this subject? All right. Seeing and hearing done, I'll close the public hearing portion and bring it back to the board for discussion.
Madam Chairman, we have this on a closed session, I believe. I'd like to have a visit with our counsel on some issues that have been raised.
Wise idea. All right. We will adjourn to closed session, and we'll be back.
Would like to say that I can appreciate concerns that people have about projects, and that's the reason why we go through environmental analyses. One thing I thought was rather interesting was this, the surface level being reduced from 80% to 30%. I've sat on this board for 10 years, and when we dealt with gravel pit operations, this was a big issue. It was the other way. The concern was that surface areas, the more the surface area you have, the more evaporation you have, the more evaporation you have, the more water loss you have. And so, there was a major concern about having large expanses of surface water in old ponds that would be created by removing of gravel and being below the water table. And that was a big issue, but how do you address that? How do you reduce that surface level? How do you keep them dry? Major concern by the conservation water districts because they did not, they felt any drop of water that evaporated was a drop of water that was lost and could be used or something else. So, I find it somewhat fascinating that in this situation, we're seeing the surface level, per surface area, reduced by 80%, from 80% to 30% of the project area. And that's considered a negative because in certain areas, that would be considered a great positive. I, again, I understand the concerns. It appears to me that the issues that have been raised today were raised earlier before the planning commission, that the issues have been fully vetted there. And I see this as being a good project in an area that's already quite developed, but as can be seen by the aerial photographs of the housing that exists around there. I note also, too, that although the parcels themselves are average of a half acre, when you look at the total size of this project, with the open space, the water and so forth, we're talking about basically less, more than one acre per house in terms of the total area that's occupied. And someone was commenting on this type of being dense urbanization. And I don't consider one house per acre to be very dense. In fact, our objective as a county is to try to have, if we're going to have development in the county, is to have it more dense so we don't gobble up more of our properties. So, in light of all those things, Madam Chairman, and I'd be glad to listen to my other, to my other members, but I would move to tentatively approve this project instead of a hearing within 45 days, if that works with our calendar clerk, for purposes of having new findings prepared by our staff and brought back for final action by the board.
So, it won't be a new hearing, it will be a continuation? Public hearing, April 1st. Do you want to put that in the motion?
I second that.
Any further discussion? Anybody? All right. We have a motion in a second. Cast your votes, please. Okay. Motion passes unanimously to tentatively approve, but continue the public hearing for 45 days to be brought back before the board. April 1st, is that in 45 days? About 45. All right. That's kind of a scary day for me, but okay. All right. We have another timed item. And that is our second public hearing for the day. Item number two, request from Resource Management Agency to receive, consider and approve. Item number two, request from Resource Management Agency to receive, consider and approve, and issue a written report from the RMA describing the measures regarding county ordinance number Good afternoon, Mr. Finney.
Good afternoon. And George Finney of Resource Management Agency, this, this item is a public hearing to consider extension of the urgency 45-day ordinance your board adopted last month pertaining to prevention of new medical marijuana dispensary facilities from going in, going in anywhere in the county. The extension is necessary in order to develop new regulations, which would probably take the form of a business license approach. That would address the manner in which the, these types of facilities are operated. We have included a, included a report in your agenda package, which is recommended for adoption along those lines. And that's, that's all I have. Just a reminder, this is a, because it's an urgency ordinance, requires a four-fifth vote.
Any questions for Mr. Finney from board members? Finney? And this is a public hearing, so I will open that public hearing. I've had requests for comments, and once again, it does not preclude you from addressing the board. I will go through these requests first, and then you'll have opportunity, if you haven't filled out a form, you'll certainly be allowed to speak. We'll also run the timer. Please, Madam Clerk, if you will. And the first name I have here is Jeff Nunes.
I'm not sure if I'm actually gonna be going next, but he asked if I could go before him.
Okay, and you would be?
Rick Morris.
Actually, you were after him, so that's fine.
Madam Chairman, members of the board?
It's not nice to confuse the chairman.
No, that was something else that I actually had to call ahead of time.
That's all right, you identified yourself, so we're good.
Great, okay, so I did it appropriately, great. My name is Rick Morris, I'm, my address is 517 North Church Street, Suite Number C. I'm appearing today as a special advocate. As we supported the original moratorium, we realized that a functional ordinance was a work in progress. We would tentatively support a moratorium that would allow for more informed licensing, but not just simply based on period of time. We believe that, we've already gone over many of these issues with the Planning Commission and the Resource Management Agency and this board, and most of these issue items should have already been resolved. We thought that this was what we originally requested. On January 31st, 2007, February 28th, 2007, we provided a panel of distinguished experts to the Tulare County Planning Commission, and subsequently, a report was provided to this board. I was actually here the day that that was presented by the, I believe it was Mr. Kinney, if I'm not mispronouncing his, his name. I was actually inspired by his presentation of the, of the report. At the time we voiced our concerns, we were told to address these issues to the Board of Supervisors, that it wasn't something that we could address through the Planning Commission or through the Resource Management Agency. In other words, it wasn't a zoning issue, that it was a licensing issue. And we've made several attempts to call members of the board and members of the Planning Commission and the Resource Management Agency until they just basically told us to direct our efforts to the board, and all of our calls have gone in return. And we're somewhat at a point now where we're hearing that there are recommendations that are being made and requested to be adopted, and it's something that the advocates haven't even seen yet. It's not something that we're sure that, that we can get on board with. Let's see. In light of recent events, and we realize that the issues, the licensing issues need to be clearly defined for two reasons. First reason would be so code enforcement has clearly defined guidelines to enforce the ordinance. The other would be so that the collectives, as we originally stated, would have an understanding of what their protocols were to stay within compliance. This is a public health issue, not a public safety issue. One of the things that I wanted to bring to this board was, we were invited to Kern County to sit in on some of their sessions when they recently presented their moratorium. And that, one of the biggest problems they had was that the licensing for the medical marijuana dispensaries was coming from the Sheriff's Department. The sheriff in Kern County had a personal conflict because he had an oath of office to the US Constitution, so we would recommend that at least the licensing in Tulare County go through Health and Human Services and not the, the Sheriff's Department. 10 seconds? Briefly, I'd just like to touch on the ID card program. We as advocates, we've cleared some of the way to be able to promote that more vigorously. And if we could get the cost lowered on the state ID card program, we would be able to recommend it to more patients. And last but not least, one of the things that I've been asked today is to invite members of this board, any public agencies, any law enforcement agencies, to become members of the Board of Directors for some of these dispensaries. You can help develop the guidelines, you can help with oversight, you can help with community involvement. It's something that we think if we could have people from the community involved with the oversight of these operations, that the community itself would be more comfortable with those operations. I think that's just about it. Let me see if I've got anything else. That's it. I thank you for your time. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any.
Thank you, Mr. Morris.
The only thing I would like to ask at this point is if you have any further questions, I've provided my phone number to a number of people, your staff or whatever. If you have any questions, please give me a call.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
For purposes of eliminating any possible public confusion in press articles, every county employee in the entire state of California, including this board, myself, the CAO, takes an oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States, as well as the constitutional laws of the state of California. So it's not unique to law enforcement. Just didn't want there to be confusion for members of the press that are out there.
I wasn't aware of that, I appreciate that. Thank you for clarifying that.
We all did that when we were sworn in. The only thing I would like to add, Mr. Morris, I can't speak for the rest of the board, as you indicated, trying to contact, I mean, I, I'm gonna tell you that I was unaware of, I don't know if you've left voicemails or whatever, but.
I spoke to an assistant.
I, it may take me a while, but I do return my phone calls. So, I'm not sure, I mean, I'll be happy to give you my number, so that they make sure you're contacting me.
Sounds good.
Well, I won't be doing this here, you can do that after the meeting.
No, the only thing that I would ask is that since there are recommendations that are being presented before the board, is that, you know, we'd be allowed to review those recommendations with the appropriate agencies, and if it doesn't take until January 5, 2009 to get these issues resolved, why take that long? We should be able to resolve that. I, I remember when this board first addressed this issue, you were saying, "We shouldn't take that long, it shouldn't take that long." It shouldn't, you're right, it shouldn't. And we resolved some of these issues, and I, I'm really proud of the way this board has handled this, and I'm, I'm proud of being up here and being a part of this, so I appreciate your help.
Thank you for your comments.
Madam Chair, I'll echo your statement, never received a phone call in return.
Okay. We'll figure out our communication gap. Okay, Mr. Nunes, would this be you?
Sorry for the confusion.
All right.
All right, well, good afternoon, Madam Chairman, board. I'm with two different companies that have been developed over the years, and it's been organic. It's came from the, the public itself, it's nothing that one person or one group of people have wanted, it's just, it was a need, and we went with it. The first was the Information Center, with Medical Marijuana Awareness and Defense, and the other was the Visalia Compassionate Care Center. We've been working with staff on these issues since 2005. First worked, we were with Deborah Cruz, that was the person we were sent to, to discuss these issues. And the biggest thing was the whole cultivation. Where is the, where are these clinics gonna get their medication? And I was under the presumption that all these other clinics were gonna be growing also, but that's what we need to figure out. Are farmers gonna be the caregivers, or are the farmers gonna be under the caregivers? And the only way that Deborah kind of put this into sense is cannabis cultivation is just as any other agriculture crop. It is apples and oranges. There is no way to license it, there is no way to, there's no way to direct it. So the only way that we can license these farmers that are wanting to do this for a collective or for a compassionate group, is to understand that if, one of the big things is, in the courtroom right now, we have officers that don't have tools. We don't have patients that know the guidelines. And with these licensing, it would help officers, and patients, and caregivers to be able to have these tools on the field instead of in the courtroom. And so that way, we can actually work together instead of apart, because the step team needs these tools. The ID program also, we've discussed that there's only 21 people on it right now. With Medicinal Marijuana Awareness and Defense, we have 1,500 patients. We've asked these patients, why aren't they getting their recommendations or their IDs from the state? And they're saying Tulare County is just too high. $350 is too much to ask from these patients. It is not an incentive to, to be legal in that aspect, it is a voluntary program, it is not mandatory. And in the sense of the collection of the actual distribution of medication, it is relatively mandatory. It, we need to have an ID system that we can utilize. So that way, when we have a patient that we've already found, has an ID from the state, went there a month before his recommendation has, went delinquent, and his ID was still valid. So we have to work together on this, and the only way we can do that is with the licensing, so that way we can figure out where the medication's coming from, who's growing it, so when the officers come to a crop, they know if it's legal or illegal. Thank you.
Mr. Nunes, I, I just, for your address, you have listed a city, but is there an address of a record that we could put on our records?
Absolutely. You can put the office is 3191, or 31910, Road 160, Visalia, California.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Linda Fitzpatrick?
I respectfully address Madam Chairman and the board. My name is Linda Fitzpatrick. I reside as a private citizen in Tipton, California. My address is 380 North Thompson Road, Tipton, 93272. I would like to lend my support, just my support, as a personal and private citizen for Earth Meds. That is just now, I mean, it's creation on January 6th in our, in our town. Their primary residence would be 402 South Burnett Street, Tipton. I would just like to go back to, to the law, which was actually approved, Proposition 215. It was approved on November 5th, 1996. The law was approved by 56% of voters. Took into, it went into effect the following day, in a remove state-level criminal penalties on use, possession, cultivation of marijuana by patients who possess a written or oral recommendation from their physician that he or she should benefit from medical marijuana. Patients diagnosed with any debilitating illnesses where the medical use of marijuana has been deemed appropriate and has been recommended by a physician are afforded legal protection under this act. Conditions typically covered by the law include, but are not limited to arthritis, cancer, chronic pain, HIV or AIDS, epilepsy, migraine, and multiple sclerosis. I personally am a cancer survivor. I am just here to basically lend my support to the Tipton Earth Meds that we have there. And to my knowledge, since the inception of January 5th, there has been absolutely no problems in our town. They have come to the town council, they have invited the community, as well as the board, to take a tour of their facility, to see exactly how it is processed. I'm not quite sure where all of this came from, the bureaucracy of it all. But to me, back in 1996, all of this was approved, and we're, now we're still taking precious, precious time away from people who have cancer and other debilitating illnesses by the use of this facility. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Patrick. Next I have Jose Tapia. Jose, can you give us your address, please? You just wrote Porterville on here.
1905 West Putnam Avenue.
Thank you.
My name is Jose Tapia. Good afternoon, Madam Chairman, board members. I am here, I'm a patient who wants to open his own dispensatory with the luck of my fa, with my father and my brother. I am recommended a good amount of quantity by my doctor each month, and a good amount of to grow, but I'm here to state that I'm, I want to open my own dispensatory, and because I have to travel to either Visalia, Exeter, Woodlake, other places, or like Tipton, for my medication. So I'd like to see if we can open our own dispensatory in Porterville or the outskirts of Porterville, for the residents of Porterville, for there's a lot of people there that have their cards, and also that, for environment, environmental reasons, that saves on smog, car pollution, and stuff like that, and a lot of elderly folks who don't have license for medical reasons, driver's license I'm talking about, to get to other dispensaries, have to either find rides, call a taxi, spend about 20 bucks on a taxi, plus buy their medication, it comes out more expensive. So I'm looking to see if we can open one in Porterville, or in the outskirts of Porterville.
Thank you.
Perry.
Okay, I wasn't sure if that was a V or a G.
Hi, I'm Virginia Perry Gold. Good afternoon. My family came to Pixley in 1940, 1950, and 1952. We have lived in the Pixley community since that time. Over the years, we have become intertwined into the community. We have owned businesses in years past, and members of our family do business in Pixley every day of the year. We depend on the business owners in Pixley for our daily needs and supplies to conduct our farming businesses. Pixley is a rural, low-income farming community, depending mostly on agricultural jobs as a way to make a living. It is a well-known fact that where low-income people congregate, our social and health problems and issues go up. Therefore, I find it totally inappropriate to allow a business on the Main Street in Pixley to dispense marijuana. A business should be of a benefit to the community. If a business is a detriment to a community, it should not be allowed to exist. The only reason I can understand a person would approve this type of business for Pixley is to fulfill the need for healthcare services in the community. I'm sure there would be many people in Pixley community without healthcare insurance, a place where they could take their babies for immunizations, help to get their diabetes under control, emergency services when a child is ill or hurt. I cannot see where dispensing of marijuana would take care of any of these needs. This last year, the Board of Supervisors took it upon themselves to shut down the healthcare clinics in Porterville and Dinuba. These clinics were needed very much in these communities. As a retired county clinic nurse, I can see where more clinics in our rural, low-income communities would help and be a big benefit to these communities. I feel the attitude should be to make more health services available, and stop giving business permits to people that cannot fill the void, and will only help the social and health issues of these communities to go up and hurt all of us by causing higher costs and loss of life. Our taxes will go up even higher, and all of this is of no benefit to any of us. Our family does not approve of having a business on Main Street in Pixley to dispense marijuana. This business does not fit into our community. We don't want it here, and we ask that this business be shut down immediately. Thank you.
That was perfect timing, and thank you, Virginia.
Adam?
Yes?
I understand that your board members all know this, but I thought perhaps for the benefit of the many people sitting here, we would clarify the difference between a zoning law and a permit. No permit whatsoever has been issued to any medical marijuana dispensary in Tulare County. That's because there is no permitting system for medical marijuana dispensaries. There is a zoning overlay for medical marijuana dispensaries. That's all. If you're properly zoned, you go, you open up your business, and that's it. The suggestion by RMA is to declare a moratorium on medical marijuana dispensaries, so that the board, the staff, and then your board can consider whether you want a special use permit, or a building permit, or a business permit, or license, or any or all of those. permit, or a building permit, or a business permit, or license, or any or all of those as an overlay on the zoning issue itself. But I just want to make sure everyone's clear what we're talking about right now.
Thank you. Okay, Louise Rambo.
I'm Louise Rambo, and I represent the Pixley Town Council, a number of other organizations, and the residents of Pixley. First of all, marijuana use is against federal law, which was reinforced by recent decisions in the Supreme Court. There are no dispensaries in Fresno County, no dispensaries in Kings County, and the federal agents have been busy in Bakersfield. I don't know exactly the status of their numbers of dispensaries. And Pixley is concerned that Tulare County and mainly the rural areas are being centered for these distributorships. A medical marijuana dispensary opened for business in Pixley unannounced on December 17th. It's located in a business complex just south of the Main Street, Court Street corner, and that business shares a common wall with the Child Care Education Program of the Tulare County Office of Education. The John Muir Charter School, High School, is less than 1,000 feet from the location. Both schools involve children and are in direct violation of the meager county ordinance, supposedly controlling the dispensaries. And this was in effect before the moratorium and apparently is still allowed to carry on its business. Our lieutenant from the substation in Pixley is most concerned about all of this because he has no direction as to what is law enforcement in relation to this. And when you finally draw up whatever it is that you're going to do, we are concerned with this. I'm sure he could probably investigate a robbery, or a shooting, or something like that, but other than that, he has, he has found no control over the whole situation. And he's tried to research this. If there's anything that involves this kind of control in the community, we certainly would be glad to learn about it. These people are on constant use of the drug, which according to my information that I gleaned from a class that I took from Fresno State on marijuana use, it is a mind-altering drug, and it has definite effect on driving performance. Now, you're not going to wait until you're off of it, you're getting this horrible pain supposedly, until you get another supply. You use it, apparently, I, of course, don't speak from personal experience, that this is constant in the body, and people coming, there was a huge advertisement before we understood, before this business opened, and people come into the community down the freeway, going at their usual 75 to 80 miles an hour, who are not really using good driving performance. A danger to everyone. The problem in Pixley is that we're very anxious for business, but the community to a person does not approve of a dispensary in our community. I don't know what you're going to do in this new control part. I don't know what you can do, because there is no state regulation or standard of cultivation or the distribution of medical marijuana. It seems to be a very poorly structured situation for our citizens to endure. As far as Pixley is concerned, and especially the fact that that dispensary is still in operation, we have 40 students in our high school, and I don't know how many children are involved in the preschool program, but they're in constant contact with these people. And I think surely there's something that the Board of Supervisors can do. We were told that there was an eviction order in place, but last week, the business person across the street told us that the operator had announced to him that his lawyer said he was not a problem, that he was perfectly able to conduct his business, and that's what he was going to do. I don't have that on a person-to-person report. I hope it's not true, but I would hope that you people will do something especially about Pixley. Goshen is facing the same problem, their school is within. Connie has three of these dispensaries, including Tipton, which is supposed to have opened on the day of the moratorium. I don't know how much of a fact that is, but that's what we were told. There are people in Tipton who disapprove of the installation, however. I don't know, I don't see my time up there.
Oh, it's long gone, Louise, but.
Long gone.
I was pretty sure you, that you.
I sure didn't.
It went right by.
Sure didn't hear it, and I apologize.
But God bless you, you came a long way, and you sat here a long time, so I did want to let you speak.
Anyway, we are truly, seriously disturbed by the whole situation.
Thank you, Louise. As for the lawyer situation, my lawyer can take their lawyer any day. That wasn't for the record, that's just, just me rambling. Is there anyone else? Come forward, then.
H.W. Dehaven, 7059 Will's Avenue in Goshen. I represent both the Goshen Planning Committee, and as a resident of Goshen, I represent the people of Goshen on a personal level. I want to thank you for the opportunity to come and speak before you again concerning this issue. I've written a letter before, and I won't address that again today. I would like to see this ordinance, or that is proposed, pass. In fact, I'd like to see a moratorium extended until such time as all of these issues can be addressed. There seems to be quite a number of issues that, and specifically for myself, I'd like to see it addressed, limiting the number of dispensaries according to the number of these ID cards that are issued. And the gentleman earlier mentioned the cost of the cards. I did not know the cost of the cards, and I'm taking him at his word, but it does seem like it's a little bit high. But I understand the need for the finance to take care of any policing problems that might arise from that. But I would like to see the moratorium continue to address that issue. Also to limit the areas of placing the dispensaries to low-density areas, where there's low public density. I'm not at all opposed 100% to them being in existence, because I understand the state law, and I understand what it is to live with pain, and I understand the need of pain medication. But this issue deals with more than just a painkiller, deals with something that's also a very large problem in our younger generation with the drug population. I'd also like to see it deal with the compliance issues of the dispensaries that are already in existence. Both in Pixley and Goshen, we have problems that both of those are out of compliance with the zoning ordinance that is already in place. They're well within 1,000 feet of areas that deal with children, and as far as I know, there's been nothing addressed as far as those compliance issues. Also, I'd like to see it, the moratorium continue even indefinitely until such time as there is an agreement on addressing at least of the issues between the federal and the state issues. And also addressing in this moratorium, the issue of public hearings for the opening of these. I was extremely distressed, and I understand that it's a zoning issue, and it's not an ordinance yet, but I would hope that it becomes part of the ordinance, that a public hearing must take place before one of these businesses can be established in any area. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Are there were someone else back there that indicated they wanted to speak?
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. My name is Lupi Arzola, and for people that don't know who I am, I operate Good Nature's in Pixley. And I just wanted to say today that some of the things that are said about my business is false. I have a couple of things that I would like to read off a letter that was sent to my attorney, and it says right here that the county already acknowledged orally that the notice is defective. And they said that they should at least reset the clock by revising a notice to my property owner. And it says right here that I am operating in full compliance with state laws and local regulations, and I just want to bring that clear to Mrs. Rambo, that I will continue to run my business in accordance to the laws of the land and SB 215. I didn't mean to get into Pixley and disturb Mrs. Rambo or anybody there. I'm a business owner, and I am a businessman, and I just hope that I could just run my business lawfully. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Arzola. Not going to get into he said, she said today.
Hi, I'm Pat Correa, and I live at 30738 Road 64 in Goshen. A lot of you probably remember me from United Domestic Workers, working within home care. I just wanted to say that I think if this is a law that these establishments need to go in for the health and well-being of patients, this is something that's great. But there are places for different businesses and what have you to be in. And in the rural areas where our children, you know, are going to school, we've got our churches, and our little small hamburger place that, this is where our kids go to get their hamburgers or what have you. We don't, we aren't like Visalia where there's a lot of places to go. So when they pick places like this to put these establishments, you know, close to our schools, our churches, and our little hamburger stands, this is an endangerment to our children and our community. So I hope that you will think very, very carefully on where these places are to be established. It is a business. When you go to do business, you do your business and you leave, but those businesses aren't right in the middle of your backyard. So I hope you think on that very, very carefully, and consider that all lives are important, and we have enough problems in Goshen without adding to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. On a separate note, it's good to see you, haven't seen you in a while.
Good afternoon, Board, Madam Chairman. My name's Melanie Mendez, and I operate Earth Meds in Tipton at 402 South Burnett. I want you to know that I support regulation for the industry. When I went to open this business, I spent three days at the courthouse trying to figure out, are there rules I need to follow? Who do I need to talk to? How do I find out if what I'm doing is okay? After, you know, going through, being directed to several different people, I was advised that there's just a zoning ordinance. Before I signed the dotted line on my lease, I called Jason LeBeau at Resource Management Agency, gave him the plot numbers for the place that I intended to operate, and made sure that we were outside of any sensitive areas before we opened business. The dispensaries do serve a purpose. In urban areas, and some of our more severely disabled patients are not able to grow their own, and that's where the dispensaries come into effect. I just wanted to say that I'm willing, I'd like to extend an invitation to all of you to tour our facility. A lot of people have never been to a cannabis dispensary, and don't know how they exist and what the protocol is. We've done our best to police ourselves without having no other way to do it. We don't sell to minors. We don't allow medicating on the premises. We don't grow on the premises. We don't support the illegal drug trade by purchasing from vendors who are not patients. So I'd just like to extend an invitation to concerned members, to the Board, anybody that has questions and hasn't been able to get those questions answered, to please give us a call. I'm happy to show you through our facility, show you our protocol, and show you how we do what we do, and we're certainly open to suggestions on how we can make that better. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, no one else? All right, seeing and hearing none, we're going to close the public comment, bring it back to the Board, for substantive discussion or not.
Madam Chair, no discussion on my part, I just would hope that this wouldn't take two minutes and 15 days to come back to the Board, and I would motion to approve staff recommendation.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and second. Cast your votes. Motion passes unanimously. Which means we extended the moratorium.
For how long?
Funny, she asked you how long.
Well, for how long?
Up to 10 and a half months.
Up to 10 months and 15 days.
Thank you.
Item 27, public comment. Anyone wishing to address the Board on matters under our purview but not on the agenda, now would be the appropriate time. Okay, seeing and hearing none. Board of Supervisors matters if you so choose. Mr. Nunez?
I just had one item. While we were gone in Washington, DC, they had a meeting in Sacramento on Fest Dam, and we're staying on schedule. The only thing that we're going to keep working toward is hopefully getting the people at the trailer parks' property bought, because they definitely are going to be gone, and we need to take care of those people. So that's the only issue that we're really pushing forward with right now, is to try to get some of the more closer to the dam, where they're going to have to be displaced anyway, to get their property bought so they can go on with their lives. But still on schedule, supposed to go to construction in 2010.
They chose a plan, then?
Pretty much so, yeah.
Was it the high-dollar plan, or the medium with road plan, or?
Well, I think you're probably going to see a full dam.
Half billion dollar?
Yeah. And will that result in a greater capacity, that project?
Hopefully, it's all going to be combined, so that we can raise the spillway and do the whole thing all in one project.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Sheeda?
Well, as most people know, we were in Washington, DC last week, except the Chairman. Supervisor Nunez and myself were representing mostly TCAG, and we spoke on our number-one issue on circulation, and that was roads. Highway 99, we asked for $3 million from the federal government to help us buy right away and plan for the extension of 99 from Goshen to approximately Caldwell. I think the year before, we were probably asking about $5 million, and the year before that, we were probably asking for $20 million. The Senators were very impressed with the fact that we were only asking for $3 million, and.
Did they tell you to wait till next year and see what you wanted to ask for, then?
Well, I think we favorably impressed them.
Good.
So hopefully, we can get it into the authorization point. It was a nice trip home, five airports in two days, but Juan and I made it. That's all I have.
Supervisor Worthly? Oh, yes.
On the Moose Lodge Day, I just want to point out, I was consistent. I voted against the church, and I voted against the social club, and you know which one I'd be in.
You're against the church and the Moose Lodge. We got it. Supervisor Worthly.
Madam Chairman, just to follow up on what Mr. Sheeda said, that we did meet, Mr. Cox, and we were more involved in county issues as opposed to simply the TCAG issues. And we were looking at little, some long-term planning here, because as we look, as we move towards the next transportation bill, that is some time out, and we're trying to position ourselves hopefully to benefit from that. to benefit from that. Also, we were there strongly supporting of our flood control projects, primarily of the dam, and that was one of our number-one projects. So it was a good meeting, we had good meetings with people, they were receptive, maybe because we've done this so often, they were, we begin to know people, and they are, they seem very, they always seem friendly, but it sounded like we've had a better response the last few times we've gone, and less of a negativity. Usually, the people go out of their way to just say, "Well, you know, we've got a war going on, and we've got budget problems," and we didn't hear that much this time around, even though we know those to be true. But I guess maybe they know that we've heard that line before. So people were responsive to us, and we had a good response to people we met with.
Supervisor Cox, were they responsive to you?
Oh, they were very responsive. Me, I got everybody's attention. Actually, I did spend a few hours Thursday afternoon with the gang unit in Washington, D.C., and one of their...
As an observer.
As an observer, and met with their gang specialist, and one of their nonprofit provider specialists, had a very interesting meeting, talked about the way their approach to gangs, which is neighborhood-oriented, not northern or southern or OT, it was neighborhood against neighborhood, but they had some very exciting programs that they've implemented over the last three or four years, that I think we can bring pieces back here to our county and use. So a very good meeting with the PD and the nonprofits there in Washington, D.C.
Thank you, I appreciate you being such a good sport, all things considered. I guess I have to report that while you were gone, I held a board meeting, I opened it, I made a motion, I seconded the motion, I voted, passed, everything I voted on passed unanimously, and you will see the results of that.
Is that why the furniture's all gone out of my office?
Yeah, everything changed while you were gone. Actually, the only thing I'd like to mention is that, of course, as you all know, well, most of you, except Cox, who was on security detail this morning, we had the opening of the World Ag Expo, or the Farm Show, as we lovingly call it after all these years. Looks to be another great show, they have the top ten, technology is amazing, it constantly amazes me. And folks from throughout the world actually are attending, and certainly from other areas of the United States, so it's always a welcome addition to, not only to agriculture, but I think to the economy of Tulare County for at least a week. So it was nice to be out there and welcome that. With that, Madam Chairman, I mean, Madam Counsel, you want to be chairman? You can be.
No, ma'am, thank you very much.
Sometimes, I wonder. We have need for closed session.
We do. Madam Chairman, we have, Items A and B are off agenda due to a typographical error. There are two Item Es on the closed session agenda. The second one is also off agenda. I do not anticipate any announcements.
Thank you.